... United States of America, the two republics of which stand one nation under God, indivisible and liberty.
Eternal God our Father, Lord God, we come again saying thank you, Lord God. Lord God, I'm just asking that you continue to keep us, Lord God, continue to cover each and every resident of our city, Lord God, continue to cover our police and our fire department, every student, every teacher. Lord, we thank you for everyone that's here today, in Jesus' name, amen.
Roll call.
Alexander.
Present.
Spatelli.
Here.
Zanet.
Here.
Galwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Raichos.
Here, nine present, zero absent. Mayor.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for my update of October 10th to describe over the last couple of weeks, some of the meetings we've had. I've met with attorneys in the lawsuit of Badistatos versus City Hammond. Most of the defendants have been dropped from this suit outside of myself. The City Hammond did file a countersuit against Mr. Badistatos, seeking damages and attorney fees for the cost of defending this frivolous lawsuit. I'll have more on that in future meetings, I'm sure. Multiple meetings with the Controller's Office over the past couple of weeks regarding the 2024 municipal city budget that's in your hands now. Multiple meetings with the Economic Development Team in regards to, I talked to Councilman Emerson about this today, in regards to the Old Haunted House, as I call it, on the, as well as the Ted Muta property located just south of 8094 on Calumet. We're looking at possibly doing a project in that part of town. Met with Mayor Dave Urean, well, no longer mayor, but he's the head of the South Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau in regards to the sponsorship of upcoming events at the South Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau. Met with Purdue Northwest Chancellor Keon and his team regarding development in downtown Hammond and PNW's role in that development downtown. Met with executives and consultants from Hammond Sanitary District regarding 2023 storms and any possible relief that may be offered to our residents from the state of Indiana. Held mayor's night out in the 5th District, that was Jefferson Elementary School. Thank you to Councilman Warple for hosting. Tended and spoke to the Realtors at Realtors Breakfast, Realtors, excuse me, Breakfast at the Last March Golf Course, attended by over 100 Realtors from across Northwest Indiana. A lot of them got to golf for free on our course, very informative, a lot of my team were speaking as well. We held Employee Olympics, it's a good team-building event. Sand volleyball was the sport this year on the new courts at the Sportsplex. Hammond Fire Department, for the third straight year, wins Hammond City Olympics again, so congratulations to Hammond Fire Department. Tended open house for the new engineering company that broke ground in Oxbow Landing, HWC Engineering Company, 2929 Carlson Drive, good to see a new business in town. Met with consultants from the parks and the engineers office and the law department to go over the bid parameters for the Plasky Park pool that came back over 100% over budget, tried to determine why, what went wrong with that bid, see if we're doing anything wrong. Met with captains and the chiefs from the Hammond Police Department, we have monthly meetings, so that's no, that's not out of the ordinary. Met with the business agent for the Northwest Indiana Building and Construction Trade Councils regarding union issues, in regards to the lack of bids that we're getting, the lack of qualified bids that we're getting for the bids that we put out. Have an update on the gas station ordinance, there's been a lot of movement since we last spoke. As you all know, the Hammond City Council passed Gas Station Ordinance 9605A by a 72 vote on August 16, 2023. You all know that it mandates all gas stations in the City Hammond close from midnight to 5:00 a.m. They do have exemptions being heard before the Hammond Board of Public Works and Safety. Right now, 13 gas stations have requested exemptions. Seven of them are from the 1st District, four of them are from the 2nd District, and two of them are from the 5th District. Three hearings have been held to date so far. The three hearings of 3350 Calumet Avenue, that's a Gasseroue located in the 1st District, 7452 Indianapolis Boulevard, that's a Save-A-Stop located on the Boulevard, on the west side of the Boulevard. 7305 Kennedy Avenue, that's a Sitco on Kennedy on the east side. Ten hearings are scheduled between now and the end of the month, including the Board of Public Works and Safety setting aside two extra days entirely for fuel station exemption hearings. We've been working real hard, obviously, with the November 1st deadline, that was very wise by the council to implement because it's given us an opportunity to take care of all the business before the implementation date. Types of evidence that we're hearing before the Board of Public Works and Safety, all police calls, so this is the type of evidence they're looking at to determine whether or not to grant exceptions, all police calls at that location for the last five years between midnight and 5:00 a.m. We work with Sergeant Chris Gotti, who works with the FBI, and he's our liaison who meets between the federal government, he is assigned to a task force, actually, but he's a Hammond Police Officer. He's also our liaison between the Hammond Police Department and the gas station owners, and he tries to persuade them nicely to join the FUSIS program, and he's been very effective at that, and that's huge for us, because when these gas stations join FUSIS, we get access to their cameras in the gas station. So if there's a crime committed, we don't have to beg for the owner that lives in Florida to fly back to Hammond and get us access. This is access that we're granted automatically now, which is wonderful for the police department. Also, the other types of evidence we hear, comprehensive zoning review from Assistant Planner, Assistant Planner Tom Novak, which is mostly resulting in signage violations, which are a pain in everybody's butt, they're not supposed to block windows, and they do it all the time, so a lot of these violations are being taken care of before the Board of Public Works and Safety, which we didn't have that type of bite before that we have now, as well as a review and a report by the Controller's Office and the Inspections Department of all business license status and the history of the entity requesting the exemption. Right now, we've approved one exception, and that's the 13350 Calumet Avenue, the Gasseroue, and it's issuing, it's fighting on two more this week, so 7452 Indianapolis and 7305 Kennedy will be issued shortly. So as of, since we've implemented this new system, three of the three gas stations are now on FUSIS, which we didn't have before, before we passed this ordinance, zero on FUSIS. Three out of three are on FUSIS, and I have a feeling that number's going to go up greatly, which gives the Hammond Police Department greater abilities to catch bad guys, which is what I consider our number-one job. That's disputed amongst several members, though. $2,100 in past due business license fees have been recovered, numerous zoning violations are being fixed, including removing of signage, repairing of broken glass, removal of graffiti, tattered signs, LED signs, junk, stuff like that is being taken care of. So I think the gas station ordinance is going very well, considering it's only been in effect for one month, so thank you to the five members of the council that voted with us on that. The Hammond Municipal Budget's before you, total city budget proposal totals $155.4 million across all funds. 3% raise to all non-contractual salaried employees. Contractual employees receive either a 1% or 2% pay raise as stipulated by their respective contracts. It's an unusual year where everybody's getting different pay raises. We usually come to you where everybody's on the same page, but this year, there's some people getting three, there's some people getting two, there's some people getting one, it's all because of union contracts, so we don't like to interfere in those, obviously. New debts are incorporated into this budget as well, the fire station number two BOT lease is incorporated into this budget, and the 2023 judgment bond for the recent settlement we made. Public safety expenses throughout all budgeted funds total $61 million for police and fire. Police is $37 million operation, fire is a $24 million operation. Okay, and last but not least, of course not least, North Hammond and East Hammond flood update coordinated, I had a meeting with State Rep Carolyn Jackson, who coordinated with Governor Holcomb's office, we've been in touch with Governor Holcomb's office as well. Governor Holcomb's office let Representative Jackson know that because Hammond collected and verified the 500-plus homes, including the homes that we verified during the East Hammond Storm, they wanted us to submit all that information to the governor's office. Representative Jackson was quoted as saying she's unsure at this time what the governor's office is able to do with all these addresses, if anything, but any assistance by them would be greatly appreciated. Of course, we were welcome Representative Jackson's help in this matter, and I do want to, again, remind everybody that the backflow preventer is the best way to protect your home if you're on a combined system, like many of us are, including your mayor. I'm on a combined system, I do not have a backflow preventer, I know that at any time my house could have the same unfortunate effects that North Hammond Homes had, so it's unfortunate that 526 homes had a backup during this storm, it's unfortunate that a couple of months before that, Councilman Barry in the 3rd District dealt with the same thing. We do, you know, there are ways to deal with this, you know, obviously, your typical homeowner's insurance doesn't cover damage covered by these types of backups, so you need an additional rider if you want to protect yourself from backup, from sewage backups, from floods, and things of that nature. Your homeowners and your renters policy doesn't do it unless you specifically pay for it, so it's a good public service to let everybody, to remind everybody of that. And secondly, if you really want to stop it, the backflow preventer is the way you're going to do it, it is an investment, though, it'll cost you probably about five grand. When all said and done, Hammond Sanitary District has rebates available for about two grand of the five grand, but it is an investment into your home, and it will prevent you from having this problem again. That's my summary for the past two weeks, I'm not sure if you have any more questions, but sorry about the long one.
So anybody have any questions for the mayor?
Mayor, just to echo your point in terms of the backflow preventer, do we know if any of the homes that flooded had the preventer?
Good question, I don't believe so, Councilman, I'm not positive, but an interesting and sad stat about this latest flood, 40% of the people that were reported flooded in this last event had experienced previous floods before, because every time we have a flood, we treat it like a murder, it's the sanitary, the sewage department goes and literally goes into homes, we don't do that very often, but during a flood event, we go into homes to verify with our own eyes that there's been a flood there, and unfortunately, 40% of the people were repeat customers, which is horrible, and unfortunately, you know, so I think the best thing I could do from where I'm sitting is remind everybody that my home could flood tomorrow, any of our homes could flood tomorrow, that this stuff, I mean, it's a horrible tragedy, I hate that it happened, but there's nothing I could do to say it's not going to happen again, there's nothing you could do, I'd be lying if I told you that. It could happen in the 5th District tomorrow, in my district tomorrow, it could happen in the 6th District tomorrow. The best way you could protect your home is to take action, to get the backflow preventer, like I haven't done, so I'm preaching, and I haven't even followed my own advice, Councilman. Also, to call your insurance company and get a rider attached to your insurance proposal, and obviously, the more you have attached to that rider, the more it's going to cost. So last time I flooded my basement, Councilman Barry, I didn't fix it, it's still pretty much in the same condition, so I don't think it would cost me a lot, but there's people with beautiful basements, and if you have a beautiful basement, if you want to protect it, call your insurance agent, it's not super expensive, but it's in addition to what you're already paying. So thank you, Councilman, for bringing that up. But the backflow preventer, I'm sure Marty can answer that question right off the top of his head, it's a check valve, and I know enough about engineering to know that water can't go backwards on that, so if you put it in the bottom, if it's operating the way it's supposed to, the sewage could leave, but it can't come back in, which is the purpose, so thank you.
Anyone else?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Of the 10 gas stations that have requested a Board of Works hearing, is that in the next month?
Yes, sir.
That is in the next month?
Councilman, we have to get this done before November 1st, which is why the Board of Public Works and Safety set up extra hearing dates, they're literally meeting extra times just to cover gas station hearings, we want to have them done, and obviously, we let the councilperson know when they have them in their district, and obviously, the local councilperson means a lot to us, we notify all the houses within 300 feet, so there's a couple we talked about right now, 7452 Indianapolis is going right now, 7305 Kennedy's going right now, and those are close to residential areas, so the homeowners in those areas got notice, and if the homeowners show up to the Board of Public Works and Safety and they present evidence, it's going to be considered. I think that's important evidence, personally. Talk about bars, I tell you, some of the best compelling evidence that we could give to the state of Indiana in trying to shut down a bar is the neighbors that live close to the bars, giving us the horror stories about the bar owner not caring about the local neighbors, this is, if you have a gas station in your neighborhood, this is what we need to hear, and if we can't hear it, if nobody shows up and says, I don't mind if that gas station's open all night, we're going to leave it open all night, but we need to hear from the neighbors, we need to hear from the local councilpeople if you want it shut down between those hours, if not, we'll just probably, you know, if they get on FUSIS and they follow our rules, we'll probably give them the exception. But I think we're making real good progress with this ordinance, I think it's going to make our city safer, and we're getting, taking care of code enforcement issues, and we're taking care of crime-fighting issues that they were ignoring before we passed this ordinance, so thank you for doing that, council.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I know there was another incident recently at another gas station in the middle of the afternoon or something like that, I'm not sure about what happened, but
Yeah.
If, I know that part of the reason we passed the ordinance was to make sure that we did get more of these businesses on FUSIS.
Yes, sir.
Couldn't we, and maybe we should have this conversation as a council, but couldn't we just pass the ordinance requesting or mandating that all of those businesses get on FUSIS?
I imagine, I don't see why, I mean, obviously, I'd want to look at with the law department even closer, but if you passed an ordinance that said a condition of having a business license issued by the City Hammond is you have to be on this system, I don't think that would be illegal, from the top of my head, sir. You know?
Yeah, just something to think about, because
I agree with you, I don't see what the big deal is. I, like I said, I own a commercial building in the City Hammond, I was Hammond PD's first customer, and Hammond PD could literally watch Shoops make a burger right now, it doesn't bother me, it doesn't bother Shoops, it's about fighting crime. So it was, maybe now we're having more of an impact, we talk to these businesses now that this ordinance is passed, but we're having great luck with the gas stations joining FUSIS, and that gives the PD all the tools they need, they could sit in their car and look at the cameras all around 73, you know, I mean, the 7,300 of Indianapolis Boulevard right now, so.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I like Councilman Kowinski was at that hearing of that first gas station that went on, and I was very impressed at, just from the, from what I saw from the owner's perspective, he was made aware of stuff that I don't think he was necessarily made aware of, just like the city was. I mean, at the end of it, I actually called, I had to leave after an hour of the meeting, and I actually called and said, was the guy given the chair or not? I mean, it was, it was like watching a court case, was my point of it, and
Thank you.
I was very impressed with the way and the fairness of the process, there were some issues that I know, I was told later on that the city went out there and addressed immediate with, immediately with the owner, and if you want to see what that's, the effectiveness of that ordinance, come to one of them Board of Public Works meetings and watch it.
Thank you, Councilman. You know, we're anticipating a lawsuit, okay? So, and this is how we expect to conduct business under this ordinance from here forward, so we're making sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's, and this is how it's going to work, it's fair, it's factual, it's about safety, that's our job, it's fair, it's factual, it's about safety. If we get sued, we are going to win, and if we don't win, I'm glad I went down on that ship, trying to make the city safer, I'm glad I went down on that ship, if we don't win, we're going to win if we get sued, okay? I'm confident, but I appreciate that, Councilman, I agree, I think it's very fair, I think it's very court-like, which is how it should be.
It was.
We're not just taking something indiscriminately, there's factual basis for everything we do, which is exactly what we were telling the council we were going to do if it was passed, so.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, good to see you.
All right, next up, approval of minutes.
President.
Yes, Councilman?
The most accepted minutes for September 25, 2023, please, on file, please.
Second.
The motion by Councilwoman Spatelli, second by Councilman Emerson, approval of minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All approves. Next up, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for approval of claims, beginning with claims dated 9/28 of '23, and ending with claims dated 10/4 of '23, claim number 6851 through claim number 7165 inclusive, in the amount of $4,183,043. I still move.
Second.
The motion by Councilwoman Vines, and a second by Councilman Spatelli, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes, claims passes 9-0. We're going to move up in the agenda, we're going to move up to number 10 at this point, the introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance 2024 City of Hammond budget proposal, sponsored by Mayor Thomas McDermott.
Do I have a motion? I'm sorry.
So moved.
Yes. Okay, yeah, I have a motion for
I make a motion that we
by Councilman
That's on first and second reading, right?
Right.
With a committee hearing, now, we're going to be doing a lot of these, so when do you want to start the committee hearing, at what time, before the next meeting, a separate day, what do you want to do?
We've got a public hearing today, we can do committee meetings if you want, next, next council meeting.
Council as a whole, say at, what, 4:00?
Sure.
So we can get all these?
Okay. 4:00 on
October 23rd.
23rd.
23rd, yes.
Public hearing on the 23rd at 4:00.
Committee hearing.
Committee hearing. Was the second, was there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Vines, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes. First and second reading of 2320 passes 9-0.
Item B. Ordinance 2321, sponsored by the Councilwoman Spatelli and Councilwoman Vines, the 2024 budget proposal for the Hammond redevelopment.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading, refer to council as a whole, with a committee meeting at 4:00 p.m. on 10/23.
Second.
The motion by Councilwoman Vines, and a second by Councilman Spatelli, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes. First and second reading of 23-21 passes 9-0.
Item C, ordinance 23-22, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and Councilman Spatelli, the 2024 budget proposal of the Sanitary District of Hammond, the Sewer Maintenance Fund 6208, also known as 8201, and a Special Sanitary Debt Service Fund 3301, known as 8280.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for first and second reading of 2322, refer to council as a whole, with the committee meeting at 4:00 p.m. on 10/23.
Second.
The motion and a second by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Spatelli, any discussion? That's 2322, any discussion? We're going to do the committee meeting same day?
Yes, please.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes, 2322 passes 9-0, first and second reading.
Item D, ordinance 23-23, sponsored by Mayor McDermott, and ordinance fixing the salaries and wages of all city officials and employees of the City of Hammond, other than those fixed by statute or by ordinance heretofore enacted, and fixing the effective date thereof.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Make the motion for first and second reading, refer to council as a whole, 10/23 at 4:00 p.m.
Second.
The motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilwoman Vines, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes, 2323 passes 9-0, first and second reading.
Item E, ordinance 2324, sponsored by Mayor McDermott, and ordinance fixing the salaries and wages of all policemen and firemen of the City of Hammond, Indiana, other than those fixed by statute or by ordinance heretofore enacted, and fixing the effective date thereof.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Move for first and second reading, refer to council as a whole on October 23 at 4:00 p.m.
Second.
Who's the second over here? Got a motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Emerson, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes, passes 9-0.
Item F, ordinance 23-25, and ordinance sponsored by Councilman Spatelli, and ordinance creating new funds, fund number 2477, 2478, 2479, 2480, for the FY 2024 Comprehensive Highway Injury Reduction Program Grant Funds.
President.
Councilman Spatelli.
First and second reading, for council as a whole, meeting set up for September, uh, 23, excuse me, 23 at 4:00. Second.
The motion and a second, second by Councilman Emerson, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes. 2325 passes 9-0, first and second reading.
Item G, ordinance 23-26, sponsored by Councilman Spatelli, and ordinance creating new funds, 2481 and 2482, for Justice Assistant Program Funds awarded to the City of Hammond Police Department.
President.
Councilman Spatelli.
First and second reading for council as a whole, with the meeting set for October twenty-third, twenty-three. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilwoman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes, twenty-three twenty-six passes first and second reading, nine zero.
President Rakos, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. We'll now go to the public hearings.
Item A. An ordinance to appropriate monies into the two thousand twenty-three gaming fund sponsored by Janet Vines and Dan Spatelli. Read them all, Mr. President?
Yes, please, go ahead, read them all.
Item B, two thousand twenty-four city of Hammond budget proposal sponsored by Mayor McDermott. Item C, two thousand twenty-four Hammond redevelopment budget proposal sponsored by Dan Spatelli and Janet Vines. Item D, two thousand twenty-four sanitary district of Hammond budget proposal sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and Councilman Spatelli.
Okay, we have all four of these ordinances up for public hearing right now. Is there anybody who would like to speak on any of these ordinances? Anybody who'd like to speak on these ordinances? Anybody who'd like to speak? Okay, public hearings is closed. Communications. You got any communications? One announcement. Hesville Commerce and Community Creative, also known as H C three, five oh one C three, uh, organization is holding their Hesville Fall Cleanup this Saturday, October fourteenth. We meet at nine o'clock at the, uh, the building at, uh, Martha and right there at Martha Red off, right behind the, uh, the restaurant there. Nine o'clock, we invite all, um, adults and teenagers, kids. We'll have a, I've been assured we'll have a good turnout from Scott Middle and Morton High School. It's at nine o'clock. Hesville Cleanup on Saturday, October fourteenth. Thank you. Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Kalwinski.
On Sep- Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association held a meeting, uh, after the flooding in the first, second, and third districts. And, uh, I want to thank a few people for, for making that possible. Uh, I had contacted, uh, Marty Willgos from the sanitary district who was gracious enough to come under fire in front of two to three hundred residents. I also want to thank Senator Lonnie Randolph and Rep., State Rep. Carolyn Jackson, who I invited and asked for assistance to see if they could see downstate, if there was any help to be had. Senator Randolph did attend. Rep. Jackson was at the, at Indianapolis and went to the governor's office to discuss if there was a way to get assistance for flooding victims. I want to also thank, uh, Lake County Councilwoman Christine Sid, who attended and offered her support, as well as Mike Rippey, Lake County Commissioner, who was out of town, but uh, offered support through county if there was any way to do that. I want to thank Adrian Santos from the North Township Trustee's Office, who brought, uh, two of his staff and paperwork and bilingual staff as well to help with the voucher program. And, uh, I would be remiss to not mention that, uh, the sanitary district also brought bilingual people and paperwork for their, uh, backflow valve preventer program, which can garner up to two thousand dollars per resident to put a backflow preventer valve in their basement. And I want to thank the Mohawks for, uh, splitting in, uh, holding more people than probably they should have, as well as the Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association for taking this undergoing and providing a place for support and information for a lot of angry people who've who are out five to ten thousand dollars for what happened to their basements regarding furnaces, water tanks, washers, dryers, carpeting, furniture, and the grief to having to clean it up. My sympathies to all. I know what that's like. I flooded twice in two different houses in the first district. But thank you to the sanitary district for a quick response and for increasing the amount of, uh, support and money for the backflow preventer program. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Alexander.
On October fourteenth, um, will be the season splendor craft and vendor show at the Civic Center from ten to five P M. And also, there'll be a fall festival, um, at the Hammond Area Career Center that's sponsored by Silver Birch of Hammond and the City of Hammond Community Development on Friday, October twentieth, from one to five P M. in the parking lot of the Hammond, um, Career Center. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
Uh, I just want to announce that, uh, they'll be having a celebration for Captain Kelvin Alcox, who, after thirty-nine years as a Hammond police officer, is finally retiring. I can say that because I've known him my entire life, literally. He's been a police officer my entire life. Um, and we grew up in a, well, I grew up in a church that he was attending as an adult, of course. But just want to say congratulations to him and invite the community to come out to help celebrate his retirement on Tuesday, October seventeenth, at the Affilia Steen Center. It'll take place during the regular crime watch meeting of the Pullman area. So once again, celebration to honor Captain Alcox for tw- thirty-nine years of service with the Hammond Police Department on Tuesday, October seventeenth at six P M. I know it's a bit early too, but I think we just got notification about the Hammond Holiday Parade. So just want to announce that it will take place on Saturday, December second at ten A M. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Tyler. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I found, um, the capital improvement board met on October second, two thousand twenty-three. Um, items that were approved, the funding allocation. Invoice number five, Nick T. accommodate new downtown Hammond station grade correction in the amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents. Another funding allocation was approved for general geotechnical engineering services, advanced engineering services in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. And finally, an appropriation was approved to the Lock Mueller Group for the Kennedy Avenue reconstruction. Attached, please find the funding allocation for the subject with the Lock Miller Group in the amount of ninety thousand, five hundred dollars. The project was extended approximately twenty months longer than a, twelve months longer than anticipated, primarily related to Nipps Gold Pole Line relocation that required the contractor to suspend work late in two thousand twenty-two. The original amount is a fourteen percent increase in the original contract. The consultant took proper step, steps to work and commiserate with the contractor's work plan. And that amount was again ninety thousand, five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Councilman Warple. Any other committee reports?
Yes, Mr. President. Uh, as usual, I'd like to update everyone on the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. As Councilman Tyler said, the East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet on, uh, Tuesday, October seventeenth, six P M. At the Affilia Steen Center. Please come out and thank Captain Alcox for his many years of service and, uh, his attention to the community. Edison Community Watch will meet, and I have the wrong date on here. Wednesday, November first, that is at six thirty P M. At six thirty P, um, six thirty P M. at Edison School. Harrison Park Crime Watch will not meet until, uh, Tuesday, December fifth, six P M. at the V F W. on Holman Avenue. Hesville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, October eighteenth, six P M. at the Gene Shepherd Center. Irving Community Watch will meet Friday, nine thirty A M. On November third, at Irving School. This is a bilingual program. South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch, uh, meets twice a year. And they have a meeting coming up on October twelfth, seven P M. at Trinity Lutheran Church on one hundred and seventy-third and Holman. Whiting Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, October twelfth, six thirty P M. at Calumet College. As usual, I urge everyone to come out to a crime watch meeting to find out what's going on in your neighborhood and learn some preventative measures to keep you and your family and your property safe. Because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines. Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports is closed. Resolutions? Next up, resolutions? There are none? New and unfinished business?
Um, I think we have.
We have an ordinance.
A third.
Oh, I'm sorry, third and final reading.
Yes.
My bad. On twenty-three nineteen?
Correct.
Ordinance twenty-three nineteen sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and Councilman Spatelli. And ordinance to appropriate monies into the two thousand twenty-three gaming fund.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of twenty-three nineteen.
Second.
Been a motion by Councilwoman Vines and second by Councilman Tyler. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, this simply appropriates monies, uh, from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. It is, uh, park improvements for each of the districts and capital improvements. That is being appropriated to two thousand twenty-three in the amount of three million, five hundred seventy-six thousand, six hundred fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents.
Thank you. Any other discussion on twenty-three nineteen? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes, twenty-three nineteen passes nine zero. There we go. All right, uh, resolutions? There are none? Any new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Recently, Juan Moreno invited me to go tour some of the older buildings in downtown Hammond. Um, one of them was the State Bank Building. Another one was the construction going out to Calumet National Building. And the third thing we got to take a look at was the Dan Rayburn Plaza. And it's just me, and I like looking at old things besides looking in the mirror, so. While we were at the Raven Plaza, Mr. Salinas happened to drive by and he asked, he was like, what's going on over there? And I told him, we, we got to take a little tour of the Raven Plaza, and he's like, oh, really? And I said, man, that place is a garbage dump. And he said, let's clean it up. So he wanted me to announce tonight that on October fourteenth, after your cleanup in the third, in the, in the sixth district, what, what time was it? One o'clock? Two o'clock? He's gonna get the group. I've agreed to go out there and help too, but we're gonna get a group together and go over there and clean up the garbage over at Raven Plaza too. So I wanted to make that announcement tonight.
Thank you, Councilman Warple. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. Public expression. First up, we have Queen Alexander.
Good after, good evening. Queen Alexander, ten fifteen Moss Street, Hammond. Well, you know me. I just have a question. You know the Saint Franciscans that closed down there on Holman? There's no work being, is there any work being done down there for them to completely tear down that building? Because it just sits there, it's just there. They were working on it when it first started, but they're not doing anything that I can see right now. So I would like you guys to look into that.
Thank you. Ken Rosick.
Hi, Councilman. Um, I was gonna speak about the, um, the Tribune story about how they delayed the bridge project. I'll go into that probably in the next one. I had a time three-minute speech for that one, but something came up and, you know, Mr., the Councilman Rakos was trying to remember the name of the building that's behind Hesville Restaurant. And everybody in town knows it as the Hesville Hanson Public Library. Okay, it's a beautiful building. It's stone, it's Tudor. I know so many people who worked there. I used to go there all the time. Okay? The city defunded it a number of years ago. It was built in nineteen twenty-five along with a few hu- other houses, along with one of the Rosick homes that's right on Arizona Street there that my great uncle's built in stone also. And I don't know what's going on yet. We're trying to find out, but it's being sold. Right, Councilman Rakos? It's being sold. A lot of the community, after it was defunded, got together and rehabbed that place. Unions donated time, valuable time, volunteers and money. So did contractors. They re-roofed it. They did a lot of stuff to it, and it looked beautiful. Of course, when you do something like that to a building, the equity goes up, right? It was in a, it was in a bad shape. They saved it. The community saved it. And now it's being sold to a private person. I don't know who owns it. I don't know who's selling it, but I think it's a travesty. Again, another cherished building in our town that used to be public for so many years that people have strong memories of is going private. A public library, defunded, demonized, and now it's going pri- uh, and rehabbed, and now it's going private. I think it's disgusting that we're allowing this to happen. I'd like to thank the volunteers who came out last Saturday to help us clean the Briar Eastwood Woodlands in Hesville. It was a beautiful day in the woods. We had around twenty-five people, many of whom stayed the entire day. We had college students, agency representatives, children, grandmothers, and a few Hesville old farts. We gathered twenty-three bags of garbage, three tires, and a plastic lawn goose. It's getting harder to find trash out there to pick up. The woods and Parish Avenue are looking better than ever. Again, I'd like to say that the Post Tribune did do a story, and I'll talk about it next time when I get my next three minutes. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ken. Next up, Anthony Diaz.
Evening, Council. Anthony Diaz, West Hammond Alderman. Um, I did mention last time about taxes going up on properties for our veterans. Something, uh, is not in place now. Somehow it's increased. A lot of them, my constituents, are asking me what's going on. I really don't know. I brought it up last time. I still didn't hear a response, uh, but I don't know how that formality does, goes. But, um, again, I would like to get some feedback from that because a lot of these veterans are suffering with the taxes they have to pay on their property, and it's gone up for no reason. They don't know why. I don't know why. Uh, but to, uh, piggyback on that, that library, it, it just seemed, it seemed weird that, uh, that we have the mayor's brother, his realty company making a profit on it. And it's, same incidents happened over in Holman Avenue. We had a, a firehouse. It got damaged in the basement. Some water came in, and they condemned it, I guess. But then they sold it for a couple thousand dollars. It's odd how we sell these properties that belong to city Hammond or public places, and it goes to the hands of, uh, people that are connected with the city. Just odd. You know, the last, uh, last time we talked about the gas station being closed, we had a, a shooting. So obviously, our criminals are going to the three to eleven shift. They're not working midnights anymore. So, uh, again, if he wants to, you know, get a lawsuit and expect a lawsuit, we're just expecting trouble. It's more money for his lawyer friends, so I guess it goes to his, his standing. Another point, we're missing signs at Hammond High. A, uh, well, we're, one sign was gone. I guess they found it. They're gonna put it in a proper place. We are missing our sign for the Hammond Tech, uh, basketball team that won. We are missing our sign for the Hammond Tech, uh, basketball team that won nineteen forty. The only, the only team in Hammond, uh, state, to win the state championship basketball tournament, and that was in nineteen forty. That's gone. We're losing our history, we, we continue to do this. Last month, the council meeting up in North Hammond. I'm not from North Hammond, but a lot of my constituents are, a lot of my friends, a lot of things have happened. Marty was preaching about global warming. Well, feces, condoms, and Kotex don't come from the rain. Somehow, you know, this is through the system. And it might have been with, uh, the flood that happened in Clark Field. That backed up the system that Saturday, and the rains came Sunday. So if we had already a swelled system, that rain had no place to go. It wound up going back into the people's homes, creating havoc, creating damages. Seems like the city just let that water go because they knew, they knew that they have lawyers, and we're gonna get them, we're gonna get some money out of the construction company. They asked for seven hundred thousand, I think they're getting around five hundred thousand. I think that money should be going to the, the community should go into the citizens that got damaged. I think that money right there should be going to, but again, um, a lot to talk about, but thank you for your time. We'll do this next time.
Thank you. Uh, I see somebody on Zoom that might want to talk. George Stoyad, would you like to speak public expression?
No, thank you.
Yeah, at least I didn't forget you this time. All right.
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Got a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting's adjourned.